Good morning and welcome to JBL Eastus Virtual Town Hall Meeting. This morning, our viewers have the opportunity to witness some of the base's influential leaders engage in conversation regarding important topics that affect our base's community. Before we begin, let's take this time to introduce some of the many panel members that will be answering your questions. With us this morning, we have Major General Anthony Funkhauser, JBL Senior Commander, Army Element, Colonel William Galbraith, Commander 733 Mission Support Group, Command Sergeant Major James Jackson, Command Sergeant Major 733 MSG, Lieutenant Colonel Jeffrey Narone, Commander 733 Forces Division, and Ms. Robin Mills, Deputy Director of 733 Civil Engineering Division. And I am Second Lieutenant Mahalia Frost, a Public Affairs Officer from the 633rd Air Base Wing, and will be your moderator for today's Town Hall meeting. Over the last several weeks, you all have had an opportunity to submit questions that will be addressed during today's discussion. Additional questions can be submitted by using the Internet link which appears at the bottom of your computer or television screen, and not Facebook nor Twitter. Submit your questions, and they will be addressed throughout today's discussion as time allows. Please be aware that in order for some questions to be effectively answered, several panelists may need to comment. Well, let's get started with some opening comments by Major General Funkhauser.
Hi, well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Joint Base Langley-Eustis Virtual Town Hall. I am General Tony Funkhauser, and as the Senior Commander, I'm also known here as the Senior Commander, Army Element. I recently arrived, I've only been here about two months, but very familiar with these kind of Town Hall meetings from previous experiences, and they're really great forums for the community to come out and question, provide suggestions and ideas, and also concerns. And we're looking forward to that opportunity here today to talk to them. So, let's go ahead and get started then, I'll pass it on to the next person.
Thank you so much, we're glad to have you here, sir. Colonel Galbraith?
Hey, good morning. We're excited to have this forum today. I mean, it's been a long time coming. For the last time we had a Town Hall was in 2013, and that's when I first took command. But a lot of great strides have happened to our installation and making this a great place for you to live, work, and play. Between the construction and the improvements of the road and sidewalk networks, the water and power lines, the numerous improvements to the amenities, to fitness centers and running tracks, as well as the commissary and the PX, I believe we're well on our way, well on our way, that is, to meet our vision. And our vision is to be DOD's premier joint base, providing winning solutions, inspired teamwork, and reliable and innovative sustainable programs. But we can't rest on our laurels. Everything that we seem to attain can always seek improvement, and that's the reason why we're here today, listening to our community to improve and also to commit to tending to the needs of the patrons of Joint Base Langley-Eustis, especially Fort Eustis. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We have our first question for the command team today. The first question comes, "How will the I-64 Expansion Project, how might that impact Fort Eustis, such as impacting traffic, especially outgoing and evening rush hour traffic?"
Well, I can say that it will have minimal impact, unlike the 105 Bridge project that happened. Most of the maintenance will be done at night, but it's a long time coming. This is an initiative that came through the Governor of Virginia, Governor McAuliffe, and the I-64 Widening Project is a Newport News operationally-independent segment widening of I-64. The purpose is to mitigate the constrained environment of the trafficability on I-64. What they're proposing to do is include one 12-foot wide lane and one 12-foot wide shoulder in the direction, so we make a four-lane highway into a six-lane section. So, it's going to help out with the trafficability on I-64.
Awesome. Now, a follow-up with that, sir, is how will Fort Eustis handle the expansion of the bridges over Fort Eustis Boulevard and Industrial Park Drive?
Well, those bridges will be also laden with some widening efforts also. We're working closely with VDOT, as well as the Newport News City Manager, to understand how they're going to work on these projects. Like I said, it's mostly going to be done at night, but we've got to be cognizant of, as I call them, the folks that want to slow down and not impede the construction areas, so that also leads to a little bit of a backup. But we're in constant dialogue with Newport News and also VDOT in reference to how they're going to work this.
Now, sir, you mentioned that you're in constant conversation with VDOT and working with Newport News. One of our viewers asked specifically, "Has the 733 MSG or 633 Air Base Wing Command Team coordinated with VDOT and the City of Newport News to come up with specific plans to help alleviate these impending problems?"
Yes, we've got Route 60 and other networks, or capillaries if you would, of road networks around Fort Eustis that we're looking into. One thing that we want to make sure is that the construction that's going on in those different routes, such as Route 60, is not simultaneously going on with the I-64 project, thus making it a little bit more of a traffic snarl. So, we are in direct dialogue with VDOT and also the Newport News City Management Team on how that construction is going to go throughout the next upcoming months. Now, I-64 widening is going to be going on all the way until 2017, but it's going to kick off in September of this year.
Okay, sir. Now, traffic, traffic, traffic. We have a question that's in place for Master Sergeant DeSanto. It's in regards a little bit of the I-64 expansion and traffic. It says, "Will the entrance ramps from Fort Eustis Boulevard onto I-64 impact during this -- will it be impacted during this expansion?"
Under the current expansion project of I-64, there's no plans for any construction on the entrance or exit ramps to Fort Eustis Boulevard. After the initial work on the shoulders to, for the increased traffic load and for the shifting of the lanes, all work's going to take place in the median of I-64. If you have any additional questions or need any additional details on the project, please contact the Security Forces, the CED, or visit VDOT's website.
Thank you so much, Master Sergeant DeSanto. Do you all have any else to comment on that?
No.
Okay, now, let's move on to CED on the same subject. We have with us Ms. Robin Mills, the Deputy Director of the 733 Civil Engineering Division. Thank you for joining us, Ms. Robin.
Thank you.
A question that we have for you is, "Is it possible to set up a temporary third gate at Fort Eustis to help with the flow of morning and evening rush hour traffic?"
We actually have looked at third gate options as early as 2014. We had a project in the area of the Industrial Park, which is where the third gate option would be preferred. Unfortunately, that property is owned, privately owned, and the Industrial Park owners did not agree with having a paved road through that area. As we get closer to this project, we're going to reengage with them and see what other possibilities there are.
Okay. Well, is there a possibility of making the middle or center lane on the street leading to or going from gate to a controlled lane, so that it could be used for outgoing traffic between 4:00 to 6:00 PM or on special occasions? Now, those times that I mentioned to you, those are approximations, they can be adjusted.
Well, what a lot of folks don't realize is that right outside of Gate 2, Schallerberger Road, we do not own that road. So, it is owned by the City of Newport News. So, we would have to engage with the City of Newport News, and they would have to agree to take on the responsibility of that lane change and all the effects that would have with other traffic. But we will, we do have plans to discuss with them, as Colonel Galbraith had said, to look at all ideas to help the traffic flow.
Okay, thank you. Now, Security Forces in regarding the I-64 expansion, we have with us today Lieutenant Colonel Narone. Sir, is it possible to get on-site traffic police support during the rush hour times?
The rush hour, 0500 to 0900 in the morning, is definitely when we see the most volume of traffic at the main gate and Gate 2. It's going to come down to manpower for Security Forces, and I don't have the additional manpower to dedicate specifically to the I-64 expansion, but we currently do have controls in place already that are working to help expedite traffic through the gates. When traffic backs up to a certain point, that's when we go to these procedures to try and expedite as much as possible. Now, we do have very strict Department of Defense and Air Force regulations covering access control that we have to follow, and it's for the safety and security of the community. So, we definitely have to follow those, but we still try as much as possible to expedite traffic, and we'll definitely do this during the I-64 expansion. And also, we're checking with the local and state police to see if they have any support plans that they will be doing in addition to the traffic, separate different lanes to try and facilitate traffic as much as possible.
Okay, thank you so much. So, you all are basically already doing, you're making plans and you're doing what you have to do to kind of help mitigate a little bit of the traffic that's already occurred during rush hour?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much, sir. Now, back to you, Ms. Robin. We have another question. It's in regards to the laundromat. Is the construction across the street from the laundromat the reason for the lack of hot water? If so, how soon will this be remedied for all who rely on the laundromat for a regular basis?
We're not sure. We don't think that the construction across the street caused that failure of the hot water. CED responded to a service order request on 21 July that there was no hot water in the laundromat. By 22 July, the following day, the hot water was restored, and as of today, it's still working. So, as far as we know, we've fixed that problem, and if there's any other additional problems, we would urge the community to call our service order desk at 878-5225.
Okay, thank you. Now, we have some questions in regards to handicap accessibility for any of the community members in the area. Is it possible to create a handicapped accessibility for all sidewalks in the several block area around the health center?
Yes, we actually have our traffic engineer looking at the various crosswalk areas around the hospital to see if we can cut those curbs. I believe we can, so we're going to work on doing that.
Okay. Pest control, that's a topic of discussion for today. A question came from one of our viewers is, "What can be done to eradicate the roach problem that's occurring in Building 705?"
Well, it's really, it comes down to a housekeeping issue. We have responded to several calls over the last couple of years for various pest problems in 705, roaches probably being the highest volume. But really, what we do is we go, we do point sprays to where the problems exist when we get these service order calls, and we urge the building managers to put out the word to vacuum weekly, to take out the trash weekly, especially on Fridays, and to seal all food on a daily basis, because really, the only way to eradicate the problem is to take the source of the food out.
Okay, thank you. Now, we want to touch back a little bit on traffic. We just had another question to come up back on the traffic. Is there any way to address the traffic signals at Madison and Jefferson Avenues?
Yes, well, the traffic lights are set by timing and by sensors, and the suggestion, I think, was to go with a pure sensor, so when someone hits that area, the traffic would be triggered, or the light would be triggered. However, that would also cause a lot of additional delays. So, we were, we will look, again, our traffic engineer is going to look at the timing, and we can adjust the Jefferson Avenue light to green, turn more during the peak hours in the rush hour. So, we're going to look at that and carefully balance it with the school right there as well.
Gotcha, thank you. So, what will be the plan to fix roads in the near future?
Well, the great news is, we've had a wonderful year, or a couple of years of getting, securing funding to improve this installation, as Colonel Galbraith said. In 2014, we awarded 4.3 projects to repair damaged roads, improve curbs, pave parking lots, and this year, we recently awarded 11 additional projects, totaling 3.5 million. For example, we will begin with repaving the main gate area, Washington Boulevard to Jefferson Avenue in September. In addition, we will be repaving the PX, as well as Jacobs Theater and the gym parking lots. So, we have a lot of great, it's definitely going to continue to improve the base.
Net paving of Washington Avenue, we'll also look at the trafficability and making sure that we're doing non-peak hours also, and always trying to ensure that the patrons of the installation have that freedom of flow.
Thank you so much. That's key, because traffic has been one of our topics of discussion this time. Now, let's move a little bit to the barracks and the living circumstances. What can you tell me, Ms. Robin, about the barracks plumbing issues and AC and heat complaints? Have those been already resolved?
Yes, as far as we know, as of this morning, all of the HVAC units and the plumbing issues that we have service order calls on have been addressed in the barracks. We do have a dedicated maintenance team that is a roving team that goes throughout all the barracks, so we have a focused effort on the barracks to address all the service orders that come in. So, if calls come in for a certain area or a certain room in the barracks, for instance, it's too cold, too hot, we go address that immediately. So, we continue, again, we use the service order system. If there's a problem, they call and we respond.
Usually, how long is the process from when they give you information about a problem and for you all to actually go in to try to seek to resolve that?
Well, we're under a priority system, so if it's an emergency, life, safety, they respond immediately within four hours. Priority one is within 24 hours, we actually want a completion, and then it goes down from there. But if there is an issue with, with a health issue with the barracks being too hot, for instance, that is a priority one, and we try to address it immediately within 24 hours.
Awesome. Now, do the residents have access to know what's considered a priority one, all of that, do they get to see?
Yes, ma'am. We actually have weekly program review boards that we invite the community to come to. They're at 8:30 on Wednesday mornings, so if there is a project that's submitted, for instance, they can come to that. Otherwise, we have information, they could call the service order desk, and the service order desk can have a list of those priorities and explain that to them.
Okay, thank you. Now, for parking issues, that's been a topic of discussion with some of our viewers that we see on the chat. Is it possible to limit parking on Sternberg Avenue in front of the housing to only one side of the street?
Yes, the instruction, the Air Force, or the JBL Instruction 31-218 covers parking. It's the traffic code, and Chapter 5 specifically is dedicated to parking. Currently, if it's a no parking area, it's either designated by a sign or a painted yellow curb. Sternberg Avenue in particular, the area that the question addresses, is not a no parking area, but we're currently looking at it, and we will evaluate whether it should become a no parking area.
Okay. Now, we do have one follow-up question in regards to agent passes. It's actually for Master Sergeant DeSanto regarding Security Forces. Has the process and rules for agent passes been resolved, sir?
So, although we're a joint base, some passes are still issued that only allow access to one base, for instance, Eustis only or Langley only. With that being said, if you were issued a pass that allows you access only to Langley, you can still access Fort Eustis by entering through the visitors inspection tent. However, if you feel that you're going to need recurring access to Fort Eustis, please stop by our office at 648 Washington Boulevard and come see me. We can review your credentials and look at granting your pass privileges to Fort Eustis as well. As for the shopping, the privileges are granted by the agency where you wish to shop. Although AFIS and DECA do accept agent passes on Fort Eustis, it'd be beneficial for you to check with them to make sure they have no special requirements.
Thank you so much, sir. Right now, just so our viewers are aware, we're about to go to a short break. Please continue to submit your questions at the link that's at the bottom of your screen. We do appreciate all the questions that you've submitted thus far, and just, we'll be back after this brief break.
What are you doing?
I thought it was unloaded.
Got a wife and two kids, man.
I'm sorry.
Weapons, are you ready or not?
Good morning and welcome back to JBL Eastus Virtual Town Hall Meeting. Please continue to submit your questions and so that we can get those answered during today's discussion. We have two new panelists here with us today. We have Mr. Michael Ituris, which is the Facilities Manager, and we also have Mr. John Flood, the Director of the 733 Forces Support Division. The first question that we have from one of our viewers is for you, Mr. Ituris. It's in regards to the curb appeal. Doesn't BBC have the responsibilities to cut empty units' yards until they are occupied? And if they did, the curb appeal would be greatly improved.
You are correct that Balfour Beatty Communities does have the responsibility to maintain the vacancies. With our plan that we had, the current rate that we were expected to maintain is about 30 units on a monthly basis. The current rate that we have, due to some downsizing within the armed services, it's more than tripled. We needed to call an audible, and so, using the proper channels, we have been able to set up to have our contractors help us with maintaining that, as well as repositioning some of our staff to assist with that curb appeal aspect.
Okay. Now, a question just came in is, "Are there plans to build a park on Marseilles Housing Division, and can we get fences for our backyards?"
In the Marseille Village subdivision, the developmental plan for that area has been completed per the construction guidelines that were set. That does not mean that we are not open to reviewing that, to see about future developmental plans for expansion of backyards and playgrounds, particularly in the pavilion areas there, but that is something that we would review in future developmental plans.
Now, is that also in regards to having the fences in the, in the backyards of the homes as well? That's a part of that development plan that would have to be reviewed?
It would be something that we would be open to reviewing in a developmental plan.
Okay. Another question for you is, "How often does the landlord inspect the property for violations and any related safety issues? It seems like the playground equipment has been overlooked for some, for some time despite the many complaints that have been sent to your office."
The game plan for the inspection process is set on a quarterly parameter, so the quarterly, we feel, may not be enough with increased foot traffic during key times, summer, children being outside of school. So, we are looking to increase during key seasons to change the parameters for our inspection process. With the increased foot traffic lately, we've noticed that we're seeing some vandalization, damage to our park areas, and so, we have partnered recently with Security Forces to assist in providing a presence in the area. So, they have agreed to increase their presence within our housing communities and our playground areas to help us out with maintaining that as far as, from a present standpoint.
Okay, sir. Well, what is the correct procedures then for reporting issues that go unresolved?
The answer would be twofold. If the issue left unresolved is in relation to maintenance within your home or within your community, then the correct channels would be to speak to one of the maintenance supervisors, which I have two on my staff, or even set up a meeting to meet with myself. The contact information for that would be 369-8344. If the issue is in relation to inbound, outbound, or leasing-related questions and concerns, then the POC would be Christina Sonnier, and her contact is at 126 Madison, and that's 369-8335.
Okay, now, if a report has been, a complaint, I should say, has already been made, how long is the process for it to get resolved typically? Is it a case-by-case basis, or do you have a general timeframe for when those complaints will be resolved?
Being a very broad topic question, the response time that you should expect on it, without knowing about the issue, it's really hard to respond to. And so, my staffing, particularly myself and my supervisory staff, with our schedules in the field, we often need to review that outside of our normal working hours, so you can typically expect about a 24-hour response time on that.
Okay. Well, how long should a resident be without creature comforts, like HVAC, refrigerators and stoves, when those complaints come up?
Each one of those appliances is kind of a unique situation with, so we'll just kind of address them in the threefold. The HVAC, we know that it's not always a very simple, quick fix to them, and so, my staff is trained to, in the process of attempting to repair, to alleviate any type of discomfort and to make the home as enjoyable as possible. We provide supporting AC units, portables, window units to try and help out with some of the discomfort received during the heat of the, heat of the summer, in the process of us trying to repair the equipment. In regards to appliances such as stoves, in the event that the stove is completely inoperable, we want to make sure that the resident always has the ability to feed their family, and so, we will replace immediately. Not all reported stove incidences, however, are entirely inoperable. It may be a damaged knob, damaged timer, and so, in the event, we want to make the right decision for that and do a partial replacement or repair the item. In the event of a refrigerator, however, it's, it either works or it doesn't.
Right.
And so, we want to make sure that when it's reported that we handle it just right away. We don't want you to lose any, any of that food in there.
Okay. So, why is Balfour Beatty Contractors so sporadic in their lawn care schedule?
The sporadic nature, or rather, the appearance of it, is in regards to the weather. Not only actively raining, but in the event that the ground cannot support the heavy equipment of our landscape crews, we want to ensure that we're being very responsible and respectful of the grounds, common areas, lawns, and of the installation itself. And so, sometimes our, our contractors work outside of their normal schedules, so you may see them working extended hours throughout the week or even throughout the weekend to make sure that we can handle the entire installation.
Let's just move on now. We have a question that's for the command team, for our facilities, and also for you, Mr. Flood, for Force Support. This question says, "Presently, dogs are being walked around the housing areas, and their owners have not been cleaning up or picking up after their animals. What can be done about this, and who is the enforcer?"
First, first enforcement is, of course, self-discipline and policing up your own animal's waste, but then, that's where the community also has to get involved. Community as in, approach these folks and state, "Hey, look, your, your dog just had a waste dropping, and someone has to pick it up, and it's definitely not going to be the patrons around here." So, it's got to be a self-policing, a community policing approach to this. I really don't have the police officers to have walking around to watch as dogs are being, doing their daily cycles, so it's definitely going to have to start within, with the community, and telling your fellow patrons on whether or not they're doing the right things or not.
So, what advice then could you give to our viewers for the proper, let's just say, approach to another community individual when they see that they do not pick up after their animal?
It's communication. Communication over and over again, whether that's approaching someone or actually perhaps leaving a message on their door. Nonetheless, it's a form of communication to say, "Hey, look, we're noticing this action going on, and it's not really tolerable in our community to have your dog's waste not policed up." So, just in, just in speaking with everyone.
Okay, now, not only around the sporting field, but in the open field areas, are there any doggie stations where you would have the, the trash can and also doggie bags for the community members if they're, let's just say, don't have a bag with them to pick up after their animal?
What we can do is, uh, let's see. Uh, yeah. What we can do is look at a way of providing that, but right now, we don't have those facilities at each sports field. We do have some at the dog park, and the dog park, it's in its infancy. It just opened up recently, and so, it's got a long way to go to getting to its optimum use. But nonetheless, it was an initiative that we started here on the installation.
Okay. Now, this is a question in regards to the pets as well, but it's for our Security Forces. This is for Lieutenant Colonel Narone. Sir, is there a pet or dog policy in place on post? And if so, who is the enforcer?
Yes, there is a pet policy on the installation. The Air Force instruction that covers it is AFI 32-6001. And as far as enforcing the policy, air, Security Forces, we are responsible for enforcing all installation policy rules and regulations. However, in this case, as far as the pets and the policy, if a pet owner continues to violate this policy, Balfour Beatty reserves the right to have that pet removed from the installation. The pet policy can be downloaded from the 733rd Security Forces website, which is located on the JBL E homepage. It's on the bottom right of the JBL homepage. There's a link there under Featured Links. You can go on that, download the policy, and it gives you all the information you need to know about owning and maintaining and controlling a pet on this post. And it absolutely talks about cleaning up after your pet. So, if a community member sees somebody that isn't cleaning up, they can also use that policy when they are addressing that issue with the pet owner, and they can remind them that there is an installation policy and they're violating it.
Thank you so much, sir. Now, moving on, from moving from our man's best friend, as our dogs, as we would call it, we would like to ask a question to you specifically, Mr. Flood. It's about the Fit to Win program. It has come to the community's attention that the Fit to Win program contract has not been renewed. If so, why?
That, in fact, is true. We did an evaluation of the services and programs that come under the umbrella of the Fit to Win contract and made a decision that we can better utilize that funding if we had that talent in-house as an organic capability. So, it provides us greater flexibility to respond to programming needs. In fact, we're recruiting for instructional and group exercise class instructors now under this new Fitness Center Director position. If, for those that did have a contract with, for personal training sessions with the Fit to Win contractor, he's still available to exercise those classes and sessions for his clientele.
Okay, sir. Will there be any improvements made to the dog parks, such as better fencing for smaller dogs? And how about some shade for these animals? Because as you can see, our community members, they love their dogs.
They do, in fact. And as the Colonel mentioned, we started to open this up about three or four months ago, and we're slowly creeping into expanding what we offer in there. So, I would encourage folks that have ideas. We have a very modest budget to support the dog park, but those that have ideas that are reasonable, we'll consider them. So, please submit them to us, and we'll take them into consideration to help improve the park. There are, in fact, trees surrounding the perimeter fence of the dog park, so there is, depending on the time of day, there is some shade available.
Well, how can our viewers actually submit their ideas to you?
That's easy. You can catch us on the website at jbleforcesupport.com, and there we have opportunities for customer input. And also, don't forget the ICE process. And if you have specific comments that are going to help us, but we need to exchange more information, be sure, don't sign as an anonymous sender, but give us your contact information so that we can have discussions on how better to improve the process.
Awesome. Now, we're going to transition a little bit to our end processing, sir. What are the procedures for when reporting to JBL E after hours? Because there are certain procedures already written within the orders that they already, that our service members have.
Yes, ma'am. JBL E no longer offers 24-hour reception for soldiers' report that come during off-duty hours. However, the policy is, is that they need to report to their Brigade Staff Duty Officer during those time periods. We did find a gap in our advertisement of this, and we're going to help that by adding the Brigade points of contacts and contact information onto the JBL E website so that that information's available to all.
All right. And last but not least for you, sir, it's in regards to our recreation area. So, why isn't there actual working movie theater on the installation?
Not unlike many installations across the military spectrum in Conus, APES has decided if there's not enough participation, if they're not given the revenue they need to offset their costs, then movie theaters have slowly closed up. Because of the competition off-post and also the availability of online movies, it's just more convenient for folks not to go out as much. However, to help bridge that gap, we have all summer long offered Friday night free movies to family members at the youth center, in the gym, and offer refreshments as well. And that's been very popular, getting about 30 to 40 families every Friday night. And also, we have free movies for the AIT soldiers on Fridays at the rec center, and you can check out free library DVDs where we also have movies.
All right, sir. Well, we appreciate your answers and everyone at the table thus far. But for our viewers, we're actually going to go to another short break. Please make sure you submit your questions. At the bottom of our screen, you'll find the link for submitting your questions to the chat. We appreciate all the questions that we've had thus far, and we'll be back with you in just one short moment.
Driving while texting is so dangerous that we didn't even want to shoot this commercial in a real car because we were afraid we might actually have an accident and kill the actors.
That's hilarious.
Right now, there are approximately 660,000 people in the United States using their cell phones while driving. You heard that, right? 660,000 people using their phones while driving this very second. But it's not just texting, it's people eating, fiddling around with their GPS, adjusting the radio, you name it. Those distractions cause over half a million accidents a year, many leading to death. Please, put the distractions away and pay attention to the road.
Driving, are you ready or not?
As a motorcycle rider, you're 30 times more likely to die in a crash than someone riding in a car. And of those accidents, 35% of them were caused by the motorcyclist riding too fast. Riding, are you ready or not?
Welcome back to JBL Eustis Virtual Town Hall Meeting. Your questions have been greatly appreciated. Continue to submit your last little bit of questions to the link that's at the bottom of the screen. We do have two more panelists joining us at the table. We have with us Ms. Sheila Scott. She's a Civilian Personnel Advisory Center Supervisor. And we also have Mr. Antonio Porter, APES General Manager. One of the questions that we have from our viewers is for you, Ms. Sheila. It says, what actions are being taken to alleviate the shortage of trained personnel in the Civilian Personnel Advisory Center?
We are currently actively recruiting for seven vacancies due to turnover in the staff, due to retirements, resignations, promotions, or transfers to another agency. We currently are, do have advertisements that are open for announcements for applicants to apply. Hopefully, within the next four to five weeks, we will have referral lists issued, and we will be making, doing interviews and getting people on board pretty quickly.
Awesome. Now, a follow-up question is, how can CPAC improve the timeline for a new civilian hire?
It is a tedious process to do a recruitment action. There are different processes that we have to go through. We do work very closely with the manager to make sure that they get a quality candidate. So, it's a little different process from the resumes process. We now do the SRD, which is Strategic Discussion with the manager, actively involve him in the process. And then, we have to do the questionnaire assessment, job analysis, vacancy announcement. So, it is a long process. So, that first initial phase can take up to two to three weeks. Then, we have the process of having the announcement open. Then, we have to do the referral list. We have to do the selection. And then, also, it's certain processes that have to go through when the person is selected for security processes. So, it can take 45 to 60 days, the entire process.
Okay. Now, for you, Mr. Porter, one of the questions is a very detailed question. This viewer was very specific. They said, there has been some talk associated with future budget cuts and sequestration about closing and/or consolidating the commissaries. Is there a possibility that one or both of Fort Eustis and Langley Air Force Base commissaries could be closed within the next four to eight years, despite the money that has been poured into improving and expanding Fort Eustis's commissary?
I can only speak on behalf of the exchange. At this time, there are no current plans on closing of any exchange facilities onboard Fort Eustis or Langley Air Force Base. Within the last 12 to 18 months, we have expanded the main store aboard Fort Eustis with a new Be Fit that's for athletic and all footwear. And currently, we are looking at expansions also for Langley Air Force Base because we are a joint base. So, at this time, we have no plans to close any exchange facilities aboard Fort Eustis or Langley Air Force Base.
Okay.
And actually, I can talk on the commissary. I spoke with DECA yesterday just to verify, and there is no intention in the next 48 years to close our commissary at all. In fact, we're continuously building on it. As you can tell, there's construction. Soon, our commissary is going to be the fourth largest in the United States, and that's amazing. There's no discussion for closing it. In fact, we're actually going to grow into being a K-5 facility. And a K-5 means that the commissary will be open seven days a week. It will have an upgrade in the stockage that is currently being produced, as well as new stocks and inventory being displayed. The facade actually will be complete on the second week of September, and we're looking to do a grand reopening on the last week of September. So, our commissary is growing, and it's not going away.
Okay. Now, a little follow-up with that is, could the BXs at Fort Eustis and Langley, can they please carry some gallons of milk?
Right now, in our current assortment for our express locations, which is, which we compare to our convenience store locations outside of the installation, we currently don't have the market or the refrigeration space for gallons of milk. So, we decided to carry the smaller sizes for our half gallon and pint size and quart sizes. And also, within DECA, as Colonel Gobler alluded to, they have the larger stock assortment for grocery items. So, we decided to pull the gallon size out of our stores for the express stores.
Okay. We just had another question to come in. It says, can you tell us a little bit about the price matching policy that we have at the exchange?
Sure. The exchange will take a verbal price match on any identical item within the stock assortment. $10 or less, we will, on the on-spot, our cashiers are empowered to do that without getting management involved. So, that will be taken, no ad is required, it's just a verbal from the customer. If it is $10 or more, management may need to contact that particular retailer, or the customer may need to bring in an ad. And also, within our price match policy, we have what's called a 14-day price guarantee. So, if a customer buys an item from the exchange, for example, and that item goes on sale within that 14-day, the customer just simply needs to bring back their receipt, and we will give them the refund adjustment for the item that is currently on sale. So, not only do we, you know, price match, we offer no tax every day, not just during, like, some of our retailers during the, you know, school season, but we offer no sales tax every day. So, and we do have price matching on identical items every day that's in our stores and online.
So, with the price matching, is it only with the online for, like, Walmart, Best Buy, Target, like, your well-known name department stores? Or is it also for other online companies who are strictly, who don't have actual physical location? They just do everything online from their warehouse?
So, if it's online, then we, it needs to be for our online website. And as long as it's not refurbished items or warehouse clubs, we will match it. It doesn't have to be a well-known name brand. We will still match, as long as it's an identical item.
So, for example, if Amazon or eBay had an identical item that you all were selling in the store, had that for sale, it wasn't a refurbished item, brand new, and they're just selling it directly from their warehouse, would you all price match with them?
Yes, on our website, we are at www.shopminechange.com. Yes.
Thank you. Now, another question is, why don't we have more restaurants here on base?
Well, currently, we are always looking to expand in our food, restaurant business. With the current assortment that we have, it's mostly catered to fast food. Okay, at this present time, we are looking at other venues that we can bring in within the exchange portfolio. So, it is an ongoing demographic that we're looking at, expanding into more healthier options. But within our fast food restaurants that we do currently have, we do offer healthy menu choices. Each menu within our operations has the calories listed for the customer so they can make a choice. And also, we try to offer every meal combo. It doesn't necessarily have to be with fries or hash browns or onion rings. They can also, especially with Ikea's meal, they can get apples or a different fruit assortment with that. So, we are trying to expand on that as well. And also, in all of our retail locations, we have designated end cap spaces for healthy options where it's towards our Be Fit items that we have.
Okay. Well, a lot of our viewers are trying to take the healthier route. Everyone's trying to change their diet. With the healthier choices that you mentioned, are our viewers able to submit suggestions for other healthier items to have on the installation or at these restaurants? Or do you all do that?
Sure. Yes. Viewers can submit. They can go directly to our website at www.shopminechange.com, and they can go to the bottom of the page and click on Store Locator. And in that menu option, they can select Fort Eustis, or Langley, or Fort Story for this particular area. And within that, all the restaurant options will come up, and they can select to make a, post a comment. And that, all those comments come directly to me. I read each and every comment. Or they can go directly to the JBL E website, and we're also a part of that website as a partner as well, too, where we get those ICE comments as well, too. So, all the comments are read and are actioned properly. We do ask that, though, all customer comments, please list your point of contact information. That way, we can respond back to you in a timely manner.
Okay. Well, thank you. For our viewers, thank you for submitting your questions. Please make sure you get your last little bit of questions in before we conclude today's program. The link is at the bottom of your screen. We do appreciate everything that you've done thus far, and we're going to go to a short break, and we'll be back with you shortly.
As a motorcycle rider, you're 30 times more likely to die in a crash than someone riding in a car. And of those accidents, 35% of them were caused by the motorcyclist riding too fast. Riding, are you ready or not?
Funny, how are you going to watch this?
Come on, man. What is it?
It's this thing that Brad goes online, Dancing Cat. Hilarious.
Dad?
Ooh, that's mine. Song!
Okay, okay, that's straight up funny. But have you seen the one with sad Batman?
Guys, guys, don't look at me, look at the road! Look, you're my parents and I love you, but if you keep this up, you're gonna get us all killed!
Car crashes are the leading cause for accidental death in America.
Car crashes are the leading cause for accidental death in America, and it's dangerous enough without all the distractions. Now, give me all of your devices. All of them. You can have them back when we get there. It's good.
Driving. Are you ready or not?
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome back to JBL E Eustis Virtual Town Hall Meeting. Before we conclude our morning discussion, our panelists are willing to take any final questions that our viewers may have. We do have one question that just came in, and it's for you, Mr. Flood. When will the JBL E get wellness, get a wellness center? Okay, is anyone at the table able to answer that question for us?
Yeah, we are actually working right now in receiving, getting a wellness center. When I say getting a wellness center, we already had the facilities staked out. We've done a recon in which we, which buildings we're going to utilize. What's impeding us right now is just getting the funding correct. Because we are a joint base, there is an Army piece of this, there is a medical piece of this, or MEDAC piece of this, and also an Air Force piece of this. So the Air Force right now has given the facility, and now we're working with the Army and also with the MEDAC to get the funding for the material that's going to go inside the wellness center. I have a meeting on Friday with a person from DA Headquarters, Department of the Army, to discuss further on how this is going to be implemented.
Okay, sir. Well, Colonel Garber, we also have another question for you. Langley has a tobacco-free sign, they do have tobacco-free signs. Will Fort Eustis be able to get some of those?
Actually, just in place is the tobacco-free signs at the front gate. So you'll see large red signs that say, "This is a tobacco-free installation except for in areas where tobacco products are authorized for use." What we're working on right now is defining and make sure that, enforcing the law, I should say, that where tobacco products are being used. You're not supposed to be using tobacco, especially smoking devices, within 50 feet of a fitness center, I believe, of within different openings of organizations, and definitely not around the hospitals. And so, right now, the policing of that, again, just like what we were talking about, it's community policing as well as having the Security Forces assist in making sure that folks are following the right policies and procedures towards tobacco, smoke and smokeless tobacco.
Okay. For our viewers who do use tobacco products, are there areas that are actually, are they marked? Are the areas marked that they can actually smoke at, or they can, or are they not marked?
Well, there are places that are marked for tobacco use only. It's just in human nature and whether or not folks are going to use those, and that's what we have to enforce. We do have smoking gazebos. However, as we did a layout of all the gazebos that are around the installation that are quote-unquote "smoking gazebos," policies and procedures have morphed in how encompassing where the smoke zones are actually prohibited now. And so, some of those gazebos and the signage have been pulled away so they're not used. Again, it's a part of human nature and making sure that we police each other up on doing the right thing in reference to smoking.
Okay. And just as a reminder for our viewers, smoking is allowed 50 feet from buildings or crosswalks. Is that correct, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Now, we do have, now, we have another question that came up from one of our viewers. Oh, my goodness, the questions are steadily coming in. It is, "Why is there not childcare at any of the gyms at Fort Eustis?" I believe that would be a question for Mr. Flood.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. We do not currently offer childcare on our fitness centers because it's problematic offering off-site childcare. Paramount reason is safety of the children, and also, it's an expensive endeavor. However, what we can see as a solution to this is offering a workout area. Typically, you'll see a converted racquetball court that's offset where parents can work out in the racquetball court. And we also offer an area in which the children can play under the parent's supervision. So that seems to be a better solution. We can't do like the YMCA. Our guidelines are much more restrictive in childcare policies. So we have to maintain those guidelines, and off-site childcare is problematic from that regard.
All right. Well, if there aren't any more questions from our viewers, we would like to provide our panelists the opportunity to provide any closing remarks. We'll be starting with Command Sergeant Major Jackson, and then moving on to Colonel Garber, then finally, we'll be moving to Major General Funkhauser.
Okay. And as we close out this afternoon, we would like to thank you for taking the time to participate in, participate in our forum in answering your questions. Please, if we did not get to your questions today, please feel free to continue submitting your questions through our ICE comment system. Colonel Garber and myself, we all comment submitted to the installation. But however, if you do submit a comment to the installation, please put your contact information on the card so that we can get back to you and provide feedback to you on how we address your concern. And also, as we move into the road construction here coming in the near months, we ask you to please be safe and proceed with caution as you move through these areas. Again, thank you for your participation today.
Colonel Garber?
Awesome. Well, again, thank you for this forum also. It's been a great, great way to discuss different issues and also get to the root of causes. I will tell you, what we're striving to do right now is to have a community that works together. It's a part of our mantra is to make sure that this is a great installation where people want to work, live, and play at. I believe we've got the right leaders in place. I think we're working towards the goal. But make no, make no bones about it, the federal budget is going to have an impact, and we're going to work forward in trying to mitigate the issues that finances might play into it. When it's all said and done, it's all about people taking care of people, and that's the way inspired leaders work, is we just listen to what's going on. We have two methods besides what we have today. We started a residential working group, and the Sergeant Major and I hosted that not too long ago, just last week, as a matter of fact. And also, we read every ICE comment, as the Sergeant Major said. Where it's key is understanding the issues in the ICE comments and then being able to approach the folks back with their comments, giving them direct feedback, and that's key. The bottom line is, I think we are working real well in getting this installation to move forward. The joint basing and the finances that came along with joint basing has helped out, improved the quality of life, the facility, the road networks, as we all discussed. And I think forums like this help us listen to the community, and with listening to the community, we can get at the root of the problem and get a successful remedy. We are here to serve and support.
Thank you, sir. Major General Funkhauser?
Sure. Well, thank you again for facilitating this, and I want to thank everyone that participated in this event. This has been absolutely wonderful as a new commander coming in to identify what some of the concerns are with the community. As you can see, we're very dedicated, and we had the A-team here from all the organizations. So you had firsthand access to those individuals to give you firsthand answers to your questions. What I've seen is that there's absolute pride in the organization, in this installation. The community wants to be engaged, and that's appreciated from our standpoint. Our obligation is to find those answers for you and do the best we can to facilitate what it is that you need in the community to make it better. Understanding where, like Colonel Garber said, we are resource constrained, but our responsibility is to be innovative and figure out where the best way we can prioritize, triage, and work that to support the community. So let us know what's important to you out there. My commitment as well, as the new guy here, is to try to institutionalize this as more routinely and give you more opportunities to communicate directly with the leadership. We are always open with ICE comments, or email, or those kind of forums, but this is kind of a different way for us to kind of see and hear what all those unique topics are. So thanks again for everyone for participating. We thank you guys for being part of this, and we look forward to doing this again in the near future. Be safe out there. Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you for your comments and participation, and also, special thanks to our panelists for their participation as well. To our viewers, thank you for joining us and engaging our panelists with your questions. Remember that these meetings are meant to provide you an opportunity to make your voice heard. We look forward to having you participate in our next Town Hall meeting. Thank you and have a great day.